I want them all, that's what I really want.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started, it's 5:30. Mayor Clark is gonna join us here in a little bit, so she's asked me to fill in and chair the meeting until she gets here. And I believe Councilor Peacock and Councilmember Hall will not be here this evening, so. We're gonna go ahead and get started since it is 5:30 with the city council study session agenda for Tuesday, May 3, 2022. You have two items on the agenda, the first one is a discussion regarding the FYE 2023 Capital Improvements Program Budget. And we have city staff here with presentation.
All right, thank you, my name is Jacob Huckabee, I'm a budget technician here in the Finance Department. And this presentation today is gonna be over the fiscal year ending 2023 Capital Improvement Budget and the fiscal year ending 24 to 27 Capital Improvements Plan. And so the document we're gonna be talking about today is gonna be this Capital Improvement Budget Book here. It can be found on our city's website, or you can request a physical copy at any time from the Finance Department. All right, so just a little bit of recap on where we're at in this process. On November 16th, we had a session with an update on some of the previously funded projects, and we discussed the council priorities for this upcoming fiscal year. On February 15th, we had a discussion on those new proposed projects. And today on May 3rd, we're gonna be reviewing the final proposed plan for fiscal year ending 23. And so this slide is just showing a list of all those funds that are gonna be included in this capital budget document. And the biggest of these is gonna be the capital fund, you'll see it's broken down between the pay-go or the capital sales tax portion and the general obligation bond portion. Oh, we also in this book have the enterprise funds, we won't be talking about these today, but we are gonna have a session on May 17th, I believe, on the enterprise funds. All right, so here we have a graph showing the revenue for all 141 capital improvement projects. We have $43,235,610 total. And the largest portion of this is gonna be from the capital sales tax at 30.99%. The second largest is gonna be the bond portion, which is 28.47%. And the third is gonna be the user fees tied to those enterprise funds at 21.4%. Next, we have the expenses for all of these 141 capital projects. The largest portion of this is gonna be from that Parks and Recreation portion at 18.46%. This is largely due to some of those big projects like the Young Family Athletic Center and the Senior Wellness Center. The second largest is gonna be the street maintenance portion at 18.17%. And the third is gonna be transportation at 12.29%. So what is the Capital Improvements Fund? Just a little bit of background, it was established in 1976, and it was created to account for capital projects funded by a capital sales tax. And that capital sales tax is a 70% of 1% sales tax. And it was basically created to support projects that don't have their own dedicated special revenues at the time. So with this capital sales tax, what we have here is a breakdown of the guidelines that were established that we try to follow when we allocate this revenue. This is not a set in stone set of guidelines, they can be changed, they can be altered a little bit, but this is what we try to follow whenever we allocate those funds. So next we have the status of the capital fund. For the pay-go portion, in fiscal year ending 23, we are estimating to have a negative 3.3 million available for new projects. In fiscal year ending 24, we're projecting to have a negative 500,000. And in fiscal year ending 25, we're projecting to have about 1.7 million available for new projects. So part of this is gonna be the capital outlay or the capital equipment. For the general fund, we have 264,000 in computer replacements, 2.1 million in fleet replacements, and 1.3 million in department requests. And this includes furniture replacements, traffic signal and display replacements, body worn camera system replacements, mosquito equipment upgrade, and time clocks. In the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, we have 287,000 in fleet replacements and 4,000 in computer replacements. For the Westwood Fund, we have 85,000 in department requests, which includes golf cart replacements and mower attachments. In the Public Transportation and Parking Fund, we have 625,000 in fleet replacements and 32,000 for Cleveland County Courthouse parking pay stations and some additional cash lock boxes. And in the enterprise funds, we have 8,000 in computer replacements, 3.2 million in fleet replacements, and 761,000 in department requests, which includes a mixer, pumps, hoses, a compactor, water wall replacement parts, and additional vehicle polycarts and dumpsters.
Jacob, just a quick note for council, the 32,448 in the pay station replacements around the courthouse. The county said, please tell us that's coming soon. Yep, it's in the budget, we'll be bringing it to you. Looking forward to getting rid of all the individual parking meters that are, you know, kind of a challenge to walk around and maintain, and they'll be getting the same pay stations that Campus Corner benefits from right now, so we'll be expanding that program.
People could use all three universally?
Absolutely.
Do any of, before we move on to the next part of this, do we, does any of this include any of the projects any of us have requested? Like, anything that any council members may have requested for capital projects?
Those things that you talked about in the February retreat would have been included, but not in amendments?
In the recent, like, parking lot, police station, stuff like that?
Those things that would come up in amendments will come up in a later meeting.
All right, so now we move on to the project status updates. So first here we have the significant projects that are underway in fiscal year ending 23. First, we have the TMDL Compliance and Monitoring Plan for 300,000. The Lake Thunderbird TMDL Data Analysis and Plan Update for 270,000. We have Fire Station 9, which is about 85% complete, finishing up some small stuff. We have the Engineering Design Criteria Update and Green Stormwater Infrastructure Review for 265,000. We have the Traffic Management Center for 3.3 million. The Vehicle Wash Facility at North Base for 1.8 million. The Downtown Transit Center for 1.2 million, and some new bus stops for 160,000.
Might be prudent for us to have like an update on the TMDL, I've got a lot of new councils since that was first put on us. So I don't recall the last time we kinda talked about.
Let's try to see if.
The total maximum daily load and all that stuff. Like, so it might, maybe not here, but.
Study session where we've got all council present is interesting information, I know they've changed some of the scales lately, so we've got updated, a great timing.
Reducing pollution delay.
TMDL is basically monitoring the inflow of pollutants into receiving streams that go to.
So next we have some projects that are under construction in fiscal year ending 23. First, we have the Municipal Complex Renovation, it's a $9.9 million project. The 36th Avenue Northwest, the Utility Relocation portion of that project for 1.4 million. We have the I-35 and Robinson Street Westside Project, which is complete, but that was a $5.3 million project. We have the Classen Boulevard Sidewalks for 229,000. The Flood Avenue Sidewalks, which begins in May of 2022. The Imhoff Road Bridge Emergency Repair Project, which is substantially complete and open. The Porter Avenue Streetscape, the bid is opening in summer of 2022. We have James Garner Phase 2 with a bid opening in summer of 2022. The Gray Street Two Way Conversion with the bid opening in fall of 2022. And the Constitution Street Multimodal Path.
And the Classen, that's from Boyd all the way south to where it meets Highway 77, from what I understand?
Roughly, yes.
I think we just had a constituent ask about that recently at a meeting about getting sidewalks on there. I've known it's been a project in the pipeline, so glad to see it getting under design, Councilor Schuler.
Just because the Imhoff Road Bridge project came up again, I remember back when we were doing emergency funding for that, there were two projects, I think, that came off of the list in '22. Can you remind us, I think there was one in Ward 4 and one in Ward 2. Has that, have those both been bumped down the list further?
Imhoff Creek, what we've been calling Phase 1, is the rebuilding of Imhoff Creek from the bridge south to Highway 9. That is still in your five-year plan, and there's unfinished this year for continued design as well as a grant acquisition we're working on. So it's still in the mix, that's still your number one stormwater project coming out of that.
Okay, great, I just wanted an update on that, since I know that we got, that was a priority over that, thanks.
And the Constitution doesn't have a date or anything, are we looking at maybe this year?
We should have, thank you, Councilor, we should have thrown that in there. So the Constitution Street Path Project bids in two weeks. So bids in two weeks, it's an ODOT bidding because it's a federally funded project, so we will have that under construction this summer. We're excited, it's Constitution from Classen to.
Yes, yes. There's no pedestrian crossing at that railroad crossing currently, this is provided, so excited to see that one too.
So this next slide is just showcasing some of the 2021 Street Maintenance Bond Program. On the left, we have the urban asphalt on Classen Boulevard. We have the urban reconstruction on Grover Lane, and the rural asphalt on Franklin Road. And this slide is just giving a breakdown by year of where we're at with this program. In fiscal year ending 22, we've completed the urban asphalt pavement and the urban concrete pavement. And rural road rehabilitation, urban road reconstruction, and preventative maintenance are all under construction for fiscal year '22. And urban road reconstruction is under design for fiscal year '23. All right, so this one is talking about I-35 and Robinson Street Westside. This project started construction April 2021 to add some improvements to that intersection, and it was completed in April of 2022. In total, this was a $6.1 million project. And on this slide, we have some pictures of how that turned out.
And it's done and everything's open?
Yes.
Yes.
And next we have the East Alameda Street Bond Project, this is a part of that 2012 Transportation Program, Transportation Bond Program. This project was fully funded without federal funds, and to do so, they used some of the 2016 Street Maintenance Bond Surplus Funds as well as some funding from the 2021 Street Maintenance Program. And construction began on this project in April of 2022. Next, we have this 36th Avenue Northwest Tecumseh to Indian Hills Road Project. Again, this is the 2012 Transportation Bond Program. It's widening two miles of road from two lane to four lane, adding new traffic signals at Franklin Road and Indian Hills, adding stormwater improvements, continuous sidewalks and accessibility, and improved access to Ruby Grant Park. And the waterline relocation is going to be completed in fall of 2022. And the construction on the widening is pending due to delay in federal funds. But from the city side of things, we're ready to go on this one, so as soon as we get those funds, we'll be ready to go on that.
It's designed and everything, ready to go?
Sure, ready, just all of it, designed, utility relocation is finishing up, land acquisition is complete, the environmental assessment was authorized, so we are just ready to go, just a few million short on the federal funding side.
And it is a project that we talked about in Washington DC in March with Langford and Imhoff and Cole and Bice about that we needed direct funding, not funding through Incog to get this project finished, and primarily because it is a voter approved project, so at least on my part, I feel an obligation to get it done.
So next, we just have a breakdown of the 2019 Transportation Bond Program. The first one on there, the Porter Avenue and Acre Street Intersection is complete. And for the next three projects, the Traffic Management Center, Porter Avenue Streetscape, which is up to Robinson and down to Alameda, and the Gray Street Two Way Conversion have all secured their federal funding. And so in a couple of those, we're expecting to have some excess funds available.
And the Traffic Control Management Center, all of that funding is for equipment, is that, and it's gonna be located at the North Base?
It's actually renovation of the space, maybe a quick update, this is gonna be done on Tuesday. We've, we were gonna put it at the Rich Avarition Center, but that project has been delayed, and we've gotta get this thing built and the money obligated, so we've switched over to Building C. So we're gonna occupy the southwest corner of that building. And so these funds, these federal funds will be used to do building renovation and then equipping of the space for the operation of the Traffic Management Center.
Wonderful.
So just some more information on this Porter Avenue Streetscape project. It is decorative lighting, pedestrian and ADA improvements being added, decorative concrete sidewalks, a new bus stop, place making gateways, and landscaping at the new public transit terminal. And they're looking to begin construction on this in fall of 2022, and they're looking to complete that in fall of 2023. And this is gonna have a total estimated cost of 4.1 million. This is going up to Robinson Street and down to Alameda Street along Porter. Next, we have the James Garner Avenue Phase 2 Project. This is gonna be from Flood down to Acres, with the roundabout being added on Flood. It's gonna add decorative lighting, a new bridge over Robinson Street, an extension of Legacy Trail, a landscaped median, and a limited access express route to downtown Norman. Construction on this is gonna begin in fall of 2022, and they're looking to complete construction in fall of 2023. The total estimated cost for this project is 6.6 million, and they have already secured federal funds in the amount of 4.8 million for this project. So we'll have pretty significant savings on this one.
And there was a public meeting about it last week?
Yeah, that was the completion of the environmental assessment process at eight citizens. A lot of interest apparently, it's gone well, the environmental assessment fully authorized, and we'll be able to jump already on this one.
All right, so next, just continuing on this project, they're also wanting to add some bridge aesthetics and public art to this project. About 215,000 for the aesthetics on the bridge, and 200,000 for the piece of art that's gonna go in on the roundabout at Flood, and for a total of 415,000 on this project. Next, we have the Gray Street Two Way Conversion, this is also part of that 2019 Transportation Bond Program. It's gonna convert Gray Street to a two-way traffic street. It's gonna add pedestrian and ADA improvements, a signalized intersection at James Garner Avenue. It's gonna enhance the railroad crossing. They're gonna begin construction in January of 2023, and they're looking to complete construction in fall of 2023. And this is gonna have a total construction cost of 4.1 million.
Is that fully funded federally?
Not fully. About $17 million.
That's why we delayed it.
Because people are gonna be in that moment.
We had originally planned for this project to be totally locally funded, and then it ended up qualifying for federal funds, so. A little over a million dollars?
1.7.
1.7.
All right, so next we have a series of projects along State Highway 9. Phases 1, 2, and 3 have all been completed, and Phase 4 is currently under construction. This is from 72nd Avenue to 108th Avenue East. It's gonna be a four-lane undivided rural section, has a $16.4 million budget. Construction began in August of 2021, and construction is scheduled to be completed in August of 2022 on this one. And then next, we have Norman's Surface Transportation Program and Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding History, and some of the projections going forward. So all that's in red there has been secured, and in fiscal year ending 23, we are, we have secured 2.9 million dollars. And in fiscal year '24, this is not secured, but they're estimating about 8.6 million for this. Next, we have the City's Vehicle Replacement Program. So this current fiscal year at '22, they have replaced 34 units for 2,179,000. And in fiscal year ending '23, we're proposing to replace 16 units for 2,155,000.
So we had a bunch of hail last year, multiple rounds. Where does that fit in with this? Is that 34 higher than what we anticipated, or?
Usually, well, I don't think we had that many total losses.
No, that money is not coming from this source.
Okay, it's different.
It was found kind of within departmental budgets and some later transfers from some care that money that we had available.
To repair or replace?
Yeah, the vehicles that were three years old or newer, we focused the attention on getting those repaired. If it's older than three years, we contemplate, as long as the glass is good, we can drive around with dents in our cars, and we were trying to slowly feed them into the repair cycle to not overwhelm the repair shops. We wanted the community members to be able to get their vehicles fixed first, especially with limited supply of replacement parts. So got most of the big dents out, you will see a couple of pock marks on, you know, some of our pickup trucks and some of the vehicles that, you know, doesn't really matter what they look like because they get kinda banged up in the operation anyway, so we're okay. You know, I think our fleet were more concerned about mechanical safety and making sure they run right, as opposed to the aesthetics value, but Mike, our fleet superintendent over there, he helps us determine which vehicles need to be replaced soonest based on primarily their maintenance history.
So these are scheduled in the program?
Yes.
Yeah, so anything that's unscheduled would be finding funds, kind of like Mr. Francis.
Your departmental budget and see what we can come up with.
This is vehicle replacement, if I may, this is my time to whine every year. We've got a problem here, and I'll just say it to you every year, we are not replacing enough vehicles. We've got about 150 that need to cut, we're replacing 16. It's not a good trend, we've known this for many years. We did a fleet management study 10 years ago, and it was recommended to spend about 6 million a year on this replacement program. We've never been able to get there, and even worse news this year, because of the inflation of vehicle, new vehicles, now we're only replacing 16 as opposed to 34 last year. So just, again, just heads up, that means we've got a lot older vehicles in the fleet that require a lot more maintenance and breakdown and so on, and we're here to do that, we're here to keep them on the road. And there's a point where we've got to find a solution to replace vehicles that pass over, just like your own personal. There comes a point where you just can't rely on it anymore.
So moving on to the proposed recurring sidewalk projects for fiscal year '23. This is gonna include sidewalk programs for schools and arterials at 80,000. The sidewalk accessibility project for 30,000. The citywide sidewalk project for 100,000. Downtown area sidewalk project for 50,000. Sidewalks and trails for 120,000, and the horizontal saw cut program for 40,000. And in total, that's gonna be 420,000 for the recurring sidewalk projects.
Just for my curiosity, with the schools, like Norman Public Schools, is there any cost share in that, or do we just do it? Okay.
We just do it, Councilor, it's something that council has been doing for a long time. We rank them based upon a ranking system we use as to, based upon most number of kids and pedestrians. So each school kinda takes their turn, the ones that need additional sidewalks.
Thank you.
All right, so these are just the proposed recurring projects for fiscal year ending '23. The first is the capital outlay for 3.7 million. The street maintenance projects for 2.3 million. The maintenance of existing facilities for 262,000. Stormwater drainage maintenance for 2 million. Personnel costs for 1.3 million. ODOT audit adjustments for 100,000. ADA compliance and repair at 386,000. Bridge maintenance for 750,000. Driveway repairs for 10,000. Street striping for 100,000. Traffic calming for 50,000. Community neighborhood improvements for 100,000. Building maintenance, mechanical and electrical for 75,000. And the GIS mapping update for 145,000. So in total, it's 11.4 million for reoccurring projects this upcoming fiscal year.
I'm just gonna be the bridge person, I think, because Imhoff Bridge, but, so I see 750,000 in there. That's up 250,000 if I remember from last fiscal year. And then we've had this ongoing conversation about, I guess, a bond program of some kind. Where does that idea stand? Where are we with moving something like that forward?
I've got Oliver Staff here, who has several hundred hours in that program, and they can speak better detail than I can. But we are ready to present to council what we've been calling a Bridge Maintenance Bond Program. About a $45 million package involving 18, Bill, 18 different bridges.
16 to 18. We have two that are within a zone right now, but we're trying to get information on it.
About half of those would be replacements, half of those would be major reconstruction-type repair projects, so that we kind of knock off the worst of our bridges, the ones that really need attention. So we're ready to bring that back to council whenever you're ready to talk about that. We have lots of details to do. Of course, that would take an election and probably property tax-based bond issues to finance that. In the meantime, we do appreciate your consideration of the additional funding here. These dollars will go into some of those kinds of bridges. We've got some pretty productively needed repairs out there. So about two-thirds of that would go into physical repairs. The other would go into designing for that next cycle of bridge project.
Perfect. Thank you.
Unless all of a sudden the bridge blows up.
You optimist.
Stop it. You don't know what I had to deal with.
All right, so this next slide is going to be some proposed and previously discussed capital budget amendments coming up. This first one is going to be an increase to the RTA, Regional Transit Authority Contribution. It's 182,000 for that one. We have about a million and a half for the land use, transportation, stormwater, and public safety studies. We have 360,000 for the Miller Historic District driveways, approaches, gutters, curbs, and sidewalks. We have 300,000 for a walking trail connecting Oakhurst and Wood Creek to Walmart, and $30,000 for some historical markers.
Councilman Foreman?
Councilmember Foreman would like to revisit sidewalks. If you're the bridge person, I'm the sidewalks lady. So part of what we're supposed to do is protect the, you know, preserve the quality of life for our residents. And so sidewalks is a very big issue, ADA complaint, you know, all sorts of good stuff. Anyway, can I add here, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Francisco? I would like to add another request to this. Speaking with Mr. O'Leary outside for a second, between Porter and Hampden Avenue on Rock Creek is, there's no sidewalk, and that's where all of our high school students have to walk through. So every morning, I take my daughter to school, yes. I, this morning, it was all wet and muddy, and I was seeing them tromp through it. It was all high grass and everything. There's no sidewalks, and I see women push babies with strollers and all sorts of stuff. So I would like to propose putting in a sidewalk right there, and that would be about half a million dollars. It's .4 miles, according to Google. Sure, Mr. O'Leary would have a better figure than Google, but that's all I've got so far. So I would like to add that as an amendment.
If I have the location right, is that in our 2019 program? Yeah, okay. Be happy to come back with some better estimates for your council member.
You know, our focus on ADA accessibility really does come into play and help us recognize and prioritize some work we've done recently on 24th Northwest, where there were some gaps in sidewalks, and we look for, you know, even more buckets of money if we can look for solutions that are definitely ADA relatable. Obviously, if there's no sidewalk on either, it.
Right, and it's just that little half mile, because once you get to Hampden Avenue, it's sidewalks till Stubman, all the way down.
What, that's on Rock Creek?
840 feet.
840 feet, Mr. O'Leary.
From the intersection at Rock Creek to where the sidewalk ends.
It's a good book.
Just east of Hampden Avenue.
We'll start bringing you back some details for that particular opportunity. Thank you.
Coming for you, Norman Norman.
I would just remind council about that $3 million negative available for new projects.
Look, Mr. O'Leary.
Really, you either need to give up something to pay for this, or just understand that that will exacerbate that number.
Yeah, the speed at which we deliver another project may be delayed to make that happen.
I understand.
Councilman Schuler?
Where did we put the HVAC and anesthesia machine for animal welfare?
That is an upcoming amendment from fiscal year '22.
Twenty-two.
It will be on your agenda for next meeting.
Okay, perfect.
And I mentioned in the discussion about the police department that maybe we wanted to look at building a new one, but then thinking about what minimum improvements might need to be made to the existing building while we work on trying to build a new one, if that's what we go towards. The biggest one I heard about was parking lot replacement. Is that also would be an amendment, or would it need to be part of this too?
That's also proposed to be on the list of general fund amendments that are coming forward next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So next, we have some amendments that are proposed to go with the Center City TIF Fund for fiscal year ending '23. We have the pattern zoning at 100,000, the urban design and implementation plan for 100,000, and some lighting along Legacy Trail for about 300,000.
So about that, the Legacy Trail lighting, I don't, was the intent that it would come out of the TIF Fund? Because I think the part that Councilman Hall was talking about was on the other side of the tracks, the old part of Legacy Trail that would not be in the TIF area.
What is anticipated to be funded from TIF dollars is the Johnson Study to come back to help us prioritize the infrastructure projects that were identified and give us a little more design parameter. I think the Legacy Trail lighting piece was general fund.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah.
So moving on to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. This is a project that are underway for fiscal year ending '23. We have the Emergency Communications and Operations Center. This has a budget of 16.5 million dollars, with 9.5 million coming from council, coming from the ARPA funds, and 7 million coming from the PSST Fund. This is a 19,800 square foot building. It is fully hardened and includes operational redundancies and includes space for a full emergency communications center staffing at 16 positions. And this is expected to be completed in spring of 2024.
So we heard about the Traffic Management Center earlier, that it's going in a different location because there have been delays in the EOC. So will it be moved, or is that going to be out of that structure altogether?
We'd like to keep, we've got a very small space designed into this facility as well. We'd like to keep it there as a backup emergency location in case of serious things come up, whether this be a hardened building and this site is not.
So will there need to be additional technology and things purchased to have that space?
When are we going to break ground on this?
I'm hoping November. That's our goal.
12.
We're pushing the architect really hard.
So also in the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, we have the Fire Apparatus Replacement Program. And in fiscal year ending '23, we have 800,000 budgeted going towards a fire engine and a staff vehicle for that program. Now, for the Norman Forward Sales Tax Fund, some of the future projects in this fund are going to be the new neighborhood parks at 1.3 million. We have the ongoing lease payments for Griffin Park, which is 80,000 a year, for a total of 2.4 million. We have the Canadian River Park for 2 million, new trail development throughout town for 4 million, and Saxon Park Development for 2 million.
Do we have an update about the Canadian River Park based on that location?
No, that is anticipated to come. Hello. And I'm super loud. I can't help it. That's anticipated to come towards the end of Norman Ford and the early talks when the park was talked about, that land is to be donated. Since then, there has been the landowner passed away, and it's kind of gotten a little bit confused in a couple of ongoing litigations. So we haven't had any communication since, with the family since that passed away, but we anticipate, once everything gets settled, to reengage with the family and hopefully talk about either the purchase of that land or donating it to the city for this project. But that's towards the end of the Norman Ford cycle, which is 2030.
And as it relates to Saxon Park Development, we'll be planning a study session of some sort in the not-too-distant future to share with council some design concepts for the tribal celebration grounds that we think would make a wonderful addition, including some infrastructure upgrades, also working with eight tribal governments and their participation in the design and hopefully in the funding of those improvements to Saxon Park. So should be two before not too long.
And this last slide is just showcasing some of the Norman Ford projects that are currently underway. On the left, we have a photograph of the Young Family Athletic Center, a rendering of the photograph. And on the right, we have a rendering of the Senior Wellness Center. And that is all I have for this presentation. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to reach out.
Is this the time or place to bring up what you and I were talking about?
Absolutely, just, yeah, wherever we have opportunities in front of council. Yes, not agenda-ed properly.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
We'll just prepare a communication to Mr. Francisco.
Okay.
That'll work.
Sorry for interrupting. That's why I asked.
Any other comments, questions about this item? All right, Mayor Clark's here, so I'll come and share the rest of the meeting.
With her Happy Meal?
Right, my favorite.
Do you want me to scoot down one?
No, yeah, I figured there was some weight for y'all to get up.
I don't want to stay for this one. I don't have, it's boring.
It's just the fun stuff.
All right. Item number two relates to the upcoming charter election. And we need to finalize what we're going to put on a ballot, so. Lost a council member. All right, we'll just take a quick minute. Okay, a quick minute.
Are they like perfect attendance aboard? Best data too.
You've brushed your teeth every day, kind of a thing?
Sorry. I totally used my fob at like midnight after Norman Music Festival to come in here and pee. Just in case. Yeah, I was like running. I was like, crap, I forgot.
Do you lock the outside bathroom?
Yes, so they're not moved into.
Yeah.
Or do they don't lock?
Hot by an issue, hot by an issue, change the thing. But yeah, just in case you pull a log of like. And I was eating those caramels again. I don't know whose caramels they are. I own my bag. They're so good.
She's got to keep us all aware.
Well, I was stressing that night. I was like, why isn't that for you?
Holman had to run to the restroom.
Did I see the store that made the candy apples on campus corner? Is it not there?
It's on Main Street.
Okay.
Wait, what?
Candy apples.
Council a few times, not as many as we would have liked because of COVID, but gave a presentation on where they were. They had a couple of public hearings. And the last presentation they gave to council, it was done by Chairman Bob Thompson on August 3rd. And that's when you all voted to send, whether to send each recommendation to a vote of the people. You asked for additional discussion on four items. We did that on August 24th. At that meeting, you reached consensus to send forward the term expiration language and the appointment process language, but asked for more discussion on recall of elective officers and utility rates. Then, in the meantime, we tested out our 2014 charter amendments related to reapportionment. And so we had some improvements we wanted to suggest, and we discussed all of that at your meeting on January 4th of this year. You reached consensus to send forward the recall language and new utility rate language, so that was provided in your packet. And then you looked at reapportionment for the first time and reached consensus on the revisions to send forward, and that's been provided to you in your packet. The election date's scheduled for August 23rd, so that means first reading needs to occur on May 10th, and second and final reading on May 24th. You'll have two ordinances, one that actually amends the charter, and then the other ordinance that calls the election and has all of the fund ballot language on it. The thing to keep in mind with ballot language is it has to be an adequate summary of what you're asking the voters to change, but it can exceed 200 words, and it's got to be about an eighth-grade reading level. So it's a little bit challenging. But you'll see what I've been working on, and I still may tweak around on it a little bit, but I wanted to at least give you an idea of what that would look like. So the first one is, and we're just going to put them on the ballot in the order of the charter articles. So there's no science to this. Article Two, Section One, is the stipend increase. This would begin with the 2025-year term. We didn't want to ask you all to vote on anything that would affect your current terms or terms you've been elected for. So the mayor's stipend would increase to 8,100. You'll recall the Charter Review Commission recommended a range, and I needed feedback on the range. I didn't really get much feedback on where to go within the range, so I chose the lowest number and not the highest, if you understand. And then, beginning with 2025 council member terms, this stipend would increase to $5,400 annually. Additional increases would be reviewed and determined every three years by a five-member Compensation Commission based on the CPI, the budget, and other relevant factors. And those increases would become effective for the following council member and mayor term. So again, not putting you guys in the position to vote yourself a raise. Dates were intended, as I said, to ensure you were not voting on your own increase. We did update those dates based on the election date of August 22 from the charter's initial recommendation. So this is what the language looks like. Nothing short about drafting charter language. And this was in your packets, but this is the summary that would go on the ballot. So far, I've had two people in my office who've not been involved with this read these to make sure they make sense to someone other than me, because I've been living it. So it's hard, you know, I know what I meant to say, kind of thing. So this would be the summary that would go to the voters. The second proposition will have to do with term increase and expiration of your terms, and then residency. The years get a little funky, but again, trying not to impact anybody that's currently serving or has been elected, either at the front end of the term or the end of their term. So it gets a little funky. But beginning in 2025, you'd move to three-year terms for council members. Beginning in 2026, the terms would begin on the first Tuesday following the scheduled runoff election. runoff election. Charter Commission actually recommended, I think, that you would just take office the Tuesday following your successful election, but that ends up leaving some with a start date in February and some with a start date in April. So after you all discussed it, we changed that to the Tuesday following the scheduled runoff election. You can kind of see how it will impact the next terms. The reason there's this middle column is because we're trying not to impact anyone who's currently elected's end date of their term, so we don't want to shorten anyone's term that's already been elected. So we've kind of got this middle time where it's not going to really impact, it's only going to impact the end date.
Councilmember Studley.
I'm looking at this and thinking about what we're doing right now.
Mm-hmm. I'm saying the same thing.
We really came up with an April start date because, I mean, I know for me coming in, because Kate stepped out early and I had to jump in like in the middle of budget thing, that was so overwhelming for a brand-new council member. So, we're doing the same thing here to our new council members.
And we used to do it this way, and then it got changed to July, and the feedback has been, and it was for those exact reasons, I mean, talk about jumping into a firestorm to jump in at the beginning of budget, or actually mid-budget. But the other side of that, I think, is if you take office in July, you're working within the confines of a budget you had no say-so in. And so that's sort of the balance, I think, that Charter Review Commission was struggling with, and that's why the question was given to them.
Councilmember Schuler.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the second point that you made about, you know, working within the confines of a budget that you weren't a part of, but coming in in April, I don't know that you are substantially able to understand being a part of that budget process, having also come in at the same time with Councilmember Studley at the back end or like right in the middle of the whole budget process, and, you know, trying to get on council and trying to understand the structure and working with staff and all of that, like, I don't know. So yes, you got to vote on it, but I don't know that I was really prepared, frankly. So, I mean, that was my.
We have some elects that aren't even here, and we're talk budget tonight, so.
Is it too late to change the dates on this?
No, we could remove the language having to do with changing the expiration and just leave it July.
Councilmember Holman.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I just know that, I'm also hesitant to change too much of what we've already discussed and commented on, and I know that I talked to both Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Peacock about this, that like we've done a lot of work to this point to get here and to talk about ballot language. I feel your point about this, but also like if we do this and open ourselves up to conversations about every single item here, then, you know, what are we doing?
Just removing it from the ballot, one less thing for people to vote on.
Well, it's a three-year, but we also, like, are they, the ballot language is also talking about moving council member positions to three-year terms.
Yeah, it wouldn't reduce your propositions, but it would shorten it.
I don't know, in between.
Still going?
Yeah, there's no, there's not really a good way to do it, that's why I think the council years ago changed it to July, because they found it problematic to have people just come on. Other cities do it, OKC does it, they swear in the next week, I don't know how they're able to. I mean, some candidates are very engaged and come to every meeting when they're running and continue coming when they get elected. There are a lot of candidates that are not as engaged and don't come to any meetings until they get sworn in, and so, I don't, for me, when I got elected having three months, because I got elected in April, not in a runoff, but back then, the election was in April that year, so. I got elected in April, and I had three months to visit all the city departments, meet everybody and do all that stuff, which was very helpful, but you have that same situation where you're working with a budget you didn't create, but you get to create the next two budgets. So, I don't know if there's a real good way to do it, and I don't have a real strong feeling about it, other than I did like having time to kind of get in, familiar with stuff before I got sworn in, but there's no good way based on the election. It would be better if we were able to have municipal officer elections earlier than February, April every year, but that's it, that's when we're allowed to do it, so.
Councilmember Foreman.
So I was a COVID council member, and so I was sworn in a week after getting elected during a dumpster fire, quite honestly, but I'm fine with, actually, I would prefer we do get sworn in in February. I would prefer it not be April, I would it be following your successful election, quite honestly, like, I know that it's early, but when you start in July and August, we have a retreat, oh, now you're just supposed to figure out what you're going to do for the next, I mean, no matter when you come in, you are getting hit with so much information and stuff anyway, there's no good time to just waltz right into this. So, I would prefer it like as soon as you win, like, you're in, like, we want you out, like, my preference would be that, quite honestly.
Well, I believe we chose April because of the possibly runoff, so.
Right, but that's.
It's one swearing-in date, but I'm, you win or lose, it's going to be difficult either way, I'm with you, I let the voters decide at this point, is where I'm at.
I would prefer it not be April, because, I mean, yes, we had a mayoral runoff in Ward 4, but then we also had three others that didn't go into runoff, and so, I mean, when people make an election, if they're making a switch, like, they want that switch immediately, and I don't know, I would prefer it to be an immediate switch, changing of hands.
During the committee meetings, was it ever discussed that there might be two different swearing-in dates based on runoffs?
Yes, their original recommendation was actually to take office the Tuesday following the certification of your election results, but the council's concern was, and we discussed this prior, was creating two different term lengths essentially, based on whether or not you were successful in the general.
Term lengths.
I mean, you could still make it apply to the first election date.
Councilmember Schuler.
What do other cities do, municipalities, or is it just all varied?
It varies, there are a number of cities that do take office the Tuesday following the election, Oklahoma City's one of them, I don't recall the other one, so I apologize.
They have elections.
I think more in.
When we do.
Even if there is a runoff, do they have two-raying dates?
I believe so, I'm just curious. So, Stillwater, the term of the mayor and other councilors begin at noon on the first Monday following certification of the election results. Oklahoma City, council members from each ward are elected four years and hold office until their successors are elected, so that would be certification of their election results. Edmond is the first Monday in May following their election. Midwest City begins at 7:30 PM on the first Monday after the time prescribed for the general election. Lawton begins with the second Monday in each January, so they must have elections in November, I'm guessing, but.
I don't know how they do that.
Councilmember Studley.
So, would that mean like if you got elected in February and sworn in in February, then at the next election, if there was a runoff and it didn't go until April, then the current council member would, their term length would just go until April?
So it'd be two years and two months, or three years and two months, essentially.
Councilmember Schuler.
Do we foresee any problems with, I mean, we already have problems with people not serving out their full term, and so asking council members to stay on another two months?
Dude.
I'm just saying.
I'm staying on, I mean, we've seen it like when I won in 2019, I won in February and did not get sworn in until July, so, I mean, it's annoying.
I meant the sitting council member who's now term is two months longer.
Assuming they didn't run again.
If they didn't run again, you have a new council person coming in, they go, that seat goes to a runoff.
Well, hopefully, people will just accept that's part of the responsibility of serving your community and being on the council.
My point is that people don't fill out their current terms already, so I don't.
Is the charter 90 days to fill a seat? Is that how it is?
No.
The vacancy, there's 60.
We'll come up to that language in a minute.
So then it would potentially be.
Then it would be still okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
But it would not go into, for anybody that's on council right now, so anybody filing in the future would know that was part of the criteria.
Yeah.
That's why these dates are pushed off a little bit.
Just saying, there's an opportunity for a vacancy in between the gap period of February and April, when there's, you know, people that are like, I'm done.
I mean, that happened anyway. Hey, I mean, whether retained it or not, like.
But she was elected.
Right, but Kate stepped down.
And then able to move in and serve.
Right.
Kate stepped down early, but.
She did step down early.
Sorry, Councilmember Studley had already been elected to serve.
Right, but what if I said I didn't want to step back? I wouldn't have had to, right? Until. Well, they could have, council could have voted to fill the vacancy for someone else if you weren't available or couldn't do it.
Technically, we could have, and I think you're right, you knew when your term would start, and maybe you had familial obligations and were unable to take, you know.
So maybe it wouldn't be that.
We filled vacancies before, as we all know, as fun as that was. Councilwoman Holman.
Yeah, I kind of think, given the discussion, I don't think there's a consensus on anything. I would probably suggest we just keep what we have and send that forward to the voters, let them decide.
That's where I'm at.
I just don't know if there is a really agreeable time to do it.
Pros and cons.
Yeah.
And I don't know that April is either, just that's what we already kind of put forward, so.
I will concede.
We've worked it out to this point, we're not going to come to a consensus about the best option, you know?
And only because, again, there's pros and cons, and we know it from firsthand experience, so let the voters decide.
Yeah, and this is very similar to what the Charter Review Commission struggled with too. Okay, moving on.
It does seem like nobody else is doing it the way we do it currently, though.
Right. They do a lot of things real special in Norman, Oklahoma.
We'll go with you guys.
Don't have to change that, thank you. Okay, so this is what the language in Section 2 looks like, beginning with the 2025 elections, and we could move to the three years, and then, beginning in 2026, those terms begin at 6:30 on the first Tuesday following the date of the scheduled runoff election. And same with the mayoral down there at the bottom.
Is that committing, Councilwoman Foreman, sorry, so that is committing us to a charter, our meetings will start at 6:30, like, if we wanted to change that, like, how would that?
No, that's just how it's worded now, actually, for the term begins.
Okay.
At that meeting when you're sworn in, so.
Okay.
But the swearing-in meeting would still have to be at 6:30, I guess, but.
Okay, stop, swearing time, I like it.
Okay, this is, affects several sections, the same issue, this is Section 5, which talks about when you hold the elections, and it's beginning in 2025 and every third year, instead of going odd words and odd years, even words and even years, so just outlines that, and at the beginning in 2028 for the mayoral election. Runoff election, same thing, just trying to capture that in every section where it's applicable.
Councilmember Schuler.
I'm just curious, so if we end up moving to three-year terms for council members, which wards would mayor be up at the same time?
It'll alternate.
Alternate.
Like it does now?
How?
Because it's going to start in an even-numbered year, so 2028 to 2020.
2031.
2030.
But if.
I'm getting off to my chart.
The even wards, but I'm just trying to understand in my brain, even wards and the mayor are together, and they both serve three-year terms, how do they ever get off the same cycle? They are going to four? I feel like we had this conversation, and we weren't going to, the Charter Review Commission didn't say to move it to four-year.
No, they didn't.
Counselor did.
I don't remember having that conversation.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
Okay, Councilwoman Holman.
We had discussed that each would be three years, and so the first year would be the even numbers, just, first year would be the even number, second year, odd numbers, third year was the mayor election, so the mayor election would always be its own.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, perfect.
And so no.
Thank you for that.
Probably better that way, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it would be unfair to have it be on the same.
Yeah, it was like.
Same slate every time.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Because then one group of council members could run for mayor without having to risk their council seat, and the other group would always have to give it up.
And I will take this chart out another column and make sure that works out that way, because if that's the way it's intended, we need to make sure it's written.
Yeah.
So just to take that way, but that's a good memory. So this is just cleanup, because we're moving away from odd-numbered wards going up in odd-numbered years and same with even. And then the other part of this section that was impacted by the Charter Review Commission's recommendations and by what you all voted on was the residency language, so right now, you currently just have to reside in Norman for six months prior to the election date. This would change it to residing in the ward for which you seek election. Of course, we've got some language in there if your ward boundaries change for reapportionment, so that you're not disenfranchised, and that's what the language would look like. And then, this is the ballot language for all of those. So, I think 102 words, under our limit, and hopefully it makes sense.
Hey, is it six months, is that pretty typical in the state of Oklahoma? Do you have to reside in the city or the ward? Are we unique in that too?
Uh, let's see. So glad I reorganized my notebook. Stillwater requires six months residing within Stillwater, but they do have, I believe, at-large council members, they are not ward-specific. Oklahoma City, you have to be a resident of the ward for which representation is sought for at least six months. Edmond, a year in the ward, and then Midwest City is a year in the city, and at the time of their election or appointment, they have to live in the ward.
Thank you.
Okay, Proposition 3, filling vacant council positions, we had a lot of discussion about this at the Charter Review Commission and with council, and ultimately, we opted to just add one sentence, or one word rather, and take away some of the language to match the historic practice that when we appoint someone to fill a vacancy, it's for the remainder of the term. So you can see that there in the language, very simple, and then the ballot language is also simple. That was a good, easy one to write. Proposition 4 is the city attorney position in the charter. This was modeled after the city manager appointment language, it's already in the charter, and the ballot question is also similar to one went forward for the city manager. It changes the position from a forecause protected position to an at-will position, who would be appointed by a majority of council and could be removed with five votes of council. So the language is long, but this mirrors exactly what's in there for the city manager. So any process you have now for addressing the city manager would be the same for this position.
Councilmember Studley.
So, just for clarification, to dumb it down for me, basically, this is saying that now we would not only be in charge of city manager, but also city attorney?
Correct.
Okay.
And so that is the language.
Councilwoman Tortorella.
You know, I know, we discussed this like a year ago, or years ago, but what's the benefit of moving your position under the council from where it's at now?
There is a history.
Well, tell me the history, what's the history, I don't understand, so it works now.
Your resident has sworn in.
Even, I know.
I know. Councilwoman Holman.
There has been past sentiment from council that not any specific city attorney in particular, but that the city attorney's office, their job is not to. not any specific city attorney in particular, but that the city attorney's office, their job is not to represent the legal interests of the city council, but the city government. And so sometimes council members have wondered if the legal advice we're getting as council members is in our best interest or the best interest of the city. And so some have felt that maybe we needed to have some sort of control of the representation or legal representation that isn't just the city, but is also the city council, is at least my kind of impression of how that discussion has gone before.
But what I would say, ethically speaking, for the rules of professional conduct for lawyers, it's the same regardless. Um, there are rules that deal with, uh, when you represent an organization, and so, uh, your, any city attorney you have should be advising you based on, and and advising staff based on actions the body takes as a whole, uh, not representing one over another. Um, and so that should not change, uh, under the ethical rules of representation.
Councilwoman Berlin.
Does that move just her position or the entire office underneath the council purview?
Just just the position of city attorney.
Councilwoman Tortorella.
That makes no sense. I mean, why not key the two together? So I don't see what the benefit is of moving just one position. How do, okay, the question, how do other cities do this? Does Oklahoma City have their attorney working directly with the council?
Yes.
And the the legal office for the city?
I, I think the entire legal office.
The entire legal office, except for the city attorney reports to the city manager.
Okay, I thought you were saying the opposite. Yeah, the entire office, other than the city attorney, reports to the city manager. It's the same in Stillwater. Edmund, I believe, is, um, I have to look back. I think Steve is hired by the city manager, um, the city attorney there, but I can look. We provided that.
So while you're looking at that, so it takes five counselors to remove you or to hire somebody?
Mm-hmm.
Is that how it works?
Mm-hmm.
And do we follow the same human resources rule for cause for removal, or is it at our will?
It's at-will. So what I would expect to happen is it operates very similar to the city manager. The city manager has a contract, uh, that provides for, I think, severance if he's dismissed for no clause, um, that kind of thing, so.
If you're dismissed at will, do you get a severance package under this new amendment?
It would would depend on the contract.
It would be very difficult to find somebody to volunteer for that position, to be at-will without a severance package, since I'm sure you'll see that to be pretty universal even up in Oklahoma City.
So, um, in Stillwater, the city attorney is appointed by the city council, but the staff is not. In Oklahoma City, the, uh, city attorney, municipal counselor there, um, is selected by council. Um, Edmund, it's the mayor and council. Midwest City, um, city manager. Lawton is city council appoints, um, and removes.
Our current or our current language, though, re, um, council confirms the city attorney's appointment after after hiring our city manager, so council still has a role in it now. It has to come to your your, um, agenda, and you approve the appointment.
Yeah, that's the only position like that.
All right.
And I think.
Councilwoman Schuler.
I think what's important to remember, too, with all of these is that we're not doing this unilaterally. This all has to go up to a vote of.
Well, I know, I know, I totally get that. It's just the 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 change here. I mean, what prohibits us from becoming, or what prevents from this become a political position if I do not like the city attorney for what they do or say?
Bing, bing, bing.
Fire you, and then we hire someone else, then we hire someone else that agrees to our politics. That's what I see the problem, potential issue if we move this way. And so I don't want a political appointee to give us legal advice. I'd rather have that person stay in the current position and represent the city as a whole still. That's my only concern is that, you know, this is the the issue that we're going to be facing, like you said before, mayor, that we're making decisions for future councils that may have a detrimental impact to how the city's run.
But as Ms. Walker said, ethically, that's not supposed to happen, under what we, the oath we take as attorneys. I don't think she'll feel any better, but, uh, that's what's supposed to happen.
I've seen a lot of bad attorneys do, you know, so. I just want the position protected, so we get the best advice and and not not look at the position politically that that you agree with us, not that it will happen, but the potential is there, and so that's my only concern.
It's up to the public.
Well, of course it is. It's why we're having this discussion and this conversation, and I just, it's just my feeling that, um, this is the road it might lead down to. It may not.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Holman.
So before, kind of led to this, was a majority of council at one time, uh, felt that we, they could not, could not trust the advice being given to us by the city attorney anymore. And the only option was to pressure the city manager, who we also part ways with. So we can't directly part ways with the city attorney, but a political council could just say, okay, well, Daryl, if you don't fire the city attorney, we're firing you. And that's not exactly what happened before, but it's, we mutually agreed to part ways with them, is the technical language, but.
Did we invite them to leave? Was that your saying?
Yes, but that was the the issue, was we, the majority of council didn't feel like the advice we're getting was trustworthy anymore, and and that their their job wasn't even to to represent our interest, it was to represent the interest of the city. So that's what kind of got that discussion going, was that, that it could be political, even if it's not, just by proxy, by saying, okay, well, the city manager is our employee, or people saying, I have a problem with this city staff, what are you going to do about it as a council member? And I say, well, we're not in charge of staffing stuff, and they say, well, who's their boss? Well, the city manager is. Well, who's the city manager's boss? You are, aren't you? Well, you better do something.
Well, and under the the provision for the city manager, where it talks about council not interfering in the appointment, removal, or administration of the city, there is a, uh, language that that provides you all an avenue to direct the city manager to investigate a department or an employee or an issue. Um, and so there is that language, and that was added, I think, with the twenty fourteen amendments.
Yeah, voters.
Um, to the charter, so that that, um, council had an avenue to address issues short of interfering with the appointment or removal.
And and what has transpired in other communities is this kind of the reality of it, that, um, we've seen it, we've seen seen instances where something happens in the personal life of an employee, and and all of a sudden, performance begins to change, or, you know, things just aren't going the way they used to go, and, um, that opportunity, if if there isn't, um, an offense that rises to the occasion of for cause, basically, what you're doing is negotiating that separation, and it's just a matter of how big a check would you like to write to part ways with that individual, because in Oklahoma, yeah, those employees are for cause, and it boils down to, well, you know, if you write a big enough check, they'd be happy to part ways and, you know, start their retirement a little earlier than planned, and that's kind of how those separations typically wind up going.
Well, we'll let the voters decide and see how it goes.
It gets easier from here. Proposition Five is the membership of the Norman Regional Hospital Authority Board. This was a request from the hospital to increase the number of the board members from nine to eleven. Nine would still be Norman residents, but two may be appointed by council, uh, from other communities, uh, that have a Norman Regional Hospital facility.
Councilwoman Foreman. Didn't we just do this by approving adding one? Because I feel like I voted against that.
Uh-uh, no.
I feel like we talked about this.
We we did talk about it in January, or actually, last August.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Oh, I was voting to push that forward.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, so that's a pretty easy one. Um, just a little cleanup there at the end. City manager shall be an, at the expense of issue member, um, and that language is similarly simple.
Councilwoman Studding.
Is the current nine board members, do they all have to be Norman residents?
Yeah.
And we just are voters.
And we point them.
And what?
We appoint them.
Yes, and you would still appoint these other two members.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I lied. It does not get easier. I'd forgotten about this. Uh, then this is actually not as bad as it looks, but we did a lot of work with you all, trying to come up with language to kind of clean up the process, to respond to the Ezel case that the Supreme Court released, uh, a little over a year ago, a year and a half. Um, so the Charter Review Commission looked at all of this, and then councils looked at this, too, but this is generally the summary of the changes, uh, that were made. We're going to use the form provided for in state law for referendum petitions. We're, those require a simple statement or a gist. We've provided that within the charter language. Um, the clerk has thirty days to review if one petition, but sixty days for a ward representative, sixty days for the mayor, because that number's going to be bigger, and ninety days of multiple petitions. Uh, we'll do a publication, uh, notice in advance of the recall election in accordance with state law. We're deleting language because our our timelines and our election dates are so limited, we're deleting language that would require it be the only question on the ballot. Um, and then, you know, Brenda and I's, like, worst-case nightmare was if we have five council members recalled, we don't have enough by charter to take any action, because everything requires five votes, so how would you even call another election? Um, so this addresses that. Uh, it would add language that in the event that more than four are recalled, um, an affirmative vote of the majority would be sufficient to take action, and then simplifying the language where we could and tying it to state election laws in a way that will change with the laws. Uh, so this is Section One. Uh, this, I forgot to mention this. This would limit the time. Uh, right now, you cannot file for, um, a recall of an officer, uh, until six ma, months after they've taken office. This would also end at six months prior to the expiration of the current term, and that's because of those election timeframes, and you end up having an election after the regular or runoff election would have occurred, uh, for that office, anyway. Um, Section Two, there's a reference there to the substantial conformance of the form provided in state law. The simple gist, if successful, this petition will allow the voters to decide whether to recall the elected officer prior to the expiration of his or her term, or allow he or she to continue in office, and that should be underlined. That's an add. And then at the end, uh, the language about the time for reviewing petitions. Section Three just adds that notice requirement that's in state law. Um, it basically says, you have a selection coming up. Uh, if you vote yes, you're voting to take that person out of office. If you vote no, you're voting to retain them. Um, Section Four is the language that saves us from the worst-case scenario here, so we have a vote, an affirmative vote of the majority of remaining seated council members being sufficient to take action until we can fill some vacancies. Um, and then the election shall be declared for the next available election date in accordance with state election law. There was no, uh, requirement to set an election, which was really, um, odd at the next election. It just said, just, you know, kind of fill it in accordance with with the law, not at the next election, so this kind of cleans that up. So this is the, my best attempt to summarize all of that, and a simple question for an eighth-grade reader. I think, I hopefully it makes sense to as many people as it can. Obviously, getting the information out on the actual changes to the code or the charter are gonna, is going to be important to make all of this make sense if you're living and breathing it. Um, Proposition Seven is utility rate elections. Uh, this one is, this will be new language you haven't seen before, but this is based on direction you all gave back in January. Council would be allowed to impose a utility rate increase of up to three percent without submission to the voters if a rate study has been conducted and it has been reviewed reviewed by an appointed utility rate commission that will have eight ward representatives and one at-large representative. And so the language is lengthy to get all that in there. Um, we're deleting the first sentence, which is all that's in the code right now, but it talks about an increase in utility rates within the control of the city of Norman. I didn't want to lose that language, because I don't want people to think that we're going to bring forward, uh, electric rate increases or something, uh, so I put that in the title for Section Two, um, so that we still have that language, and then you can see the remainder of the language there, pulling in that utility rate commission and the three percent max. And this is what that would look like on the ballot. Okay, I think this is the last one. Eight questions. It's not too bad. We've had one with over twenty before. Um, reapportionment. This is the lessons learned with the latest charter amendments. We were getting a chance to go back and make some amendments, so, um, we will do that. Uh, appoint the committee within thirty days of release of the new precinct information. The problem with our previous timelines is we appointed them long before we had the information, and so they were just stagnant and wondering, why aren't we meeting? Um, and then, uh, even after they meet, once once they start meeting, they have six months to finish. Well, based on the timeline they were supposed to be appointed by, six months would be gone before we even have the precinct information, and by state law, you have to consider the precincts and try not to split precincts, so it just didn't make sense in practice, and so this is the change. You appoint that committee within thirty days of the release of the precinct information that just came out, by the way, so you all were appointed that committee last week, and they will start meeting soon. Uh, the committee has a hundred and eighty days, still same amount of time, but now from the release of the new precinct information to redraw the ward boundaries, and then, uh, after council's, uh, consideration of the reapportionment committee recommendation last time, and this was feedback you all gave, it was very uncomfortable to be redrawing your own ward boundaries. Um, so your action would be limited to adopting the committee's recommendation, rejecting it, or sending it back to the committee for further consideration. So that's all good. Uh, so this is what the amendment to Section Two would look like. They would begin meeting and make recommendations after the release of new precinct information. Uh, they shall be appointed within thirty days of the release of that precinct information, so we don't have a committee that's sitting there wondering, why did I get appointed? I have nothing to do. Um, criteria for ward boundaries, again, tied to the release of the precinct information. And then, um, the public hearing, the language backed you up quite a bit and made it take quite a bit longer, uh, to provide a hearing, I'm sorry, to provide, um, have a public hearing at least. Ten days before the committee votes on the resolution. Uh, we definitely want them to come back and consider the feedback, but the ten-day sentence seemed to make much sense, and it really ends up dragging it out if you can't get available meeting nights or rooms, and so, um, we just wanted to give a little more flexibility there, and so that's the strike there. And then this is the last section, I believe, uh, making those three options, uh, more clear, adopting the resolution, rejecting it, or sending it back for further consideration, and then, uh, just a little cleanup there in the end, that it they go into effect for purposes of the next primary and general election set by the city council. That's the language.
Councilwoman Foreman. When are we going to start doing a campaign to get this information out to the public?
Um, Tiffany has already asked for the ballot language, so.
Okay.
Once you all vote on it, she will be ready to get into action, I think, and provide that information.
Is she going to want us to do, like, ward meetings or?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can do.
Something.
Whatever you are willing to do.
We initiate the education campaign? And happy to, yeah, the the whole road show, uh, Rotary Clubs.
Here's a great person to know. Come back.
You know, and and we've gone through the cycles where it's it's the Mr. O'Leary Show on transit, and then it's the Mr. Mattingly Show on utilities, and 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 it really does, it matters, um, which staff members have connectivity to which groups out there in the community, and at least this one, you know, everybody on staff is pretty familiar with the the changes, and we're happy to share that information with any group needing to fill some time for speakers and programs, so we'll hit it hard.
Councilwoman Schuler.
Um, so I know we had talked about at the last budget meeting about, um, setting aside money for the auditor position. Um, are we waiting to ta, I mean, because that. Are we waiting to, I mean, because that would have to go up like these, right? Are we waiting to talk about potential changes in ballot language until we officially appropriate? Or...
Typically, if voters approve that language, we just bring you the appropriation that would go right along with it.
Yeah. But it's not along.
No. And I relived this history quite a bit today, too, because I remembered a vote on it, and we did vote on it, but it was before probably half of you were on council. So it just so happens, I put together slides.
Because we had 130, I think we had the...
I definitely didn't, I didn't understand there to be any consensus to put that back on the ballot.
Right. So it was initially added to the resolution by council member Castleberry. And council directed that we draft it, even though the commission, or the, you know, the Charter Review Commission had already been appointed in the summer of 2020. But when it came forward for a vote in August, they said, well, let's postpone it to October. That would have been the last available date to adopt it prior, in order to have a January election. January 2021 is what they were looking at. And so in that time, the Charter Review Commission provided one of their updates. Council discussed it at the retreat, and then it was rejected unanimously in October of 2020. After that, the Charter Review Commission came back and it presented, Bob presented those recommendations in January 2020, October 2020, and August 2021. And that was included in his presentation each time. And we did not get any direction at that time, I think, to bring it back. But I do have language drafted from the last time that I'm going to put on the screen. It would create the Office of City Auditor and a new Article Five, which would require renumbering a number of articles. It mirrors the city manager language and the city attorney language. It would outline the duties. And it's very small. I'm sorry, I was running out of time. I couldn't split it up. That section two is small, no matter whether you put it on a slide by itself or not. But that's just copying that city manager language. The real important part, I think, here, is section three. It shall be the city auditor's duty to advise the council and each member thereof and the city manager of operational and financial audits relating to the efficient and economical operation of Norman city government and other related matters as may be required by the council or the city manager. The foregoing provisions shall not be deemed to prevent the city manager with the approval of a majority of council from employing private auditors as it deemed necessary. I couldn't go, I didn't have time to go back far enough to figure out the feedback we got that led to that draft. But that's what we presented to council back in October of 2020. And this was what that ballot language was going to look like.
Councilor Foreman?
I would like to see this move forward. I'm recalling, we were in executive session Zoom. We were still on Zoom at the time, and I won't go into all we said. But the consensus why council backed off of this had to do with the ruling that was getting ready to happen with the police department.
A funding issue.
Mm-hmm. And so that's why we kind of backed off it. But, and I can hear Kate in my mind saying, like, we'll wait and put it on the charter. Like, we'll, we won't push forward with it with the money, dah, dah, dah. We'll let the charter. Vote of the people do it. And so I would like to see it move forward. I think that was the intention that we had in that executive session, was to do it this way. So I don't know how fellow council feels, but I would like to see it move forward.
Councilor Studley? I would also like to see it move forward. I know that last time in our, not, not last council meeting, but last study session, we specifically talked about this. And I didn't realize, and I don't know if any of my other fellow council members realized that whenever Bob was presenting this, that we were specifically talking about this position that was talked about during the budget meeting of 2020. And so, again, like council member Foreman said, that money was tied up, and it was kind of, we're not talking about what we're doing with it until the litigation was done. And now that that's complete, I still feel like the city auditor is something that I would like to see move forward as well on the ballot.
What about you, T? You guys were there.
It's two. Councilor Holman?
I do also support putting it on there and letting the voters decide about it. I think it's, as discussed before, something that could help the council make better budgetary decisions. And that it was, you know, originally presented by former Councilor Castleberry, who's an accountant and recognized as being a pretty good one, I think. So it was something he felt pretty strongly about during his time on council. And it seems like it could be helpful to the councils going forward. So I'd like to see what the public thinks about it.
Councilor Schuler?
Yeah, I agree. I think that when we were talking about it two weeks, like, two weeks ago, that was my takeaway from kind of our general discussion about it in terms of budgetary appropriation, that we would like to see it move forward to a vote of the people. And so I'm in favor of putting it forward in this manner and making, obviously, making sure that it is appointed to council specifically. And it seems that this language does that.
Councilor Tortorello?
I agree. I think every corporation, every business has to have an auditor just to make sure that we're doing and following what our budget says and dictates. And so I agree that with everyone here, these are, this is a good idea to have it back in the books here. I mean, it was, it was discussed before we came on board, and it was a good idea at the time. And I still think it's still a good idea to have someone independent make sure that we're following our own rules and giving us the best advice we can to move forward. So I'm for this.
Councilor Berlin?
I'm going to go with, let the people decide.
All right, looks like we have nine proposals going forward. Does everyone agree with this language?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Catherine, you're so good. Look at you.
All right. Any other questions, comments regarding? Remember, we'll be voting on this for the first reading next week, and the 24th, second reading, and then we're set for August. Everyone good?
Sounds good.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.